Forum, we have all members of the Council.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Citizens comments, we have, I think, three.
This conference recorded.
From David and Linda Hook. We are totally in support of total masking as there are so many people. I need to start over.
Mr. President.
This is a citizen's comment from the Hooks. We're totally in support of total masking as there are so many people with underlying health issues, a healthy person doesn't have to think about running, walking, exercising. People go past our house all day long not wearing masks. If the doctors are saying someone can sneeze or cough in one aisle and it could travel over to three aisles over the aisle shelving, then what's to stop their sweat and mouth breathing and coughing when they pass our house? It becomes airborne and most of the time the wind is blowing right into our house so we can't air it out on a nice day. We are not paranoid just going by the facts shared by Dr. Fugel and others on daily briefing. So that's my citizen comment.
Mayor, I have two citizens' comments. One is from Chevelle Lopez, who's a candidate for place four election on November 3rd, 2020. The council made an ignorant decision when they did not include face masks when they go into businesses or HEBs. He stated that COVID situation is supposed to get worse. Worst is yet to come and a second wave is coming, yet here in Hondo, we do not enforce residents to wear masks. This is not a wise decision. The only council member that made sense was Councilman John Villa. This is not in the best interest of the city. The other thing, the mayor's declarations that are being mailed out are only in English and need to be in Spanish as well. There are quite a few folks that do not speak English. The information needs to get to everybody, not just to those that speak English. He stated the city workers need to get some hazardous pay or something to all the workers since they are working in this pandemic. It's a risk and essential workers. The next comment is from Bradley Price. I hope the council will begin taking the appropriate steps in reopening Hondo per Governor Abbott's Phase One plan. I've noticed most, if not all, the customers and all of the workers within HEB and Walmart were adhering to the prescribed distancing and city guidelines. I believe it may be time to enter into Phase One by opening other retail stores, businesses within Hondo, and possibly working with businesses to begin getting the employees back to work, of course, in a safe manner. Hondo, along with Texas, seems to be meeting the president's Phase One plan for reopening the country, and our coronavirus cases have been fairly low and seem to be plateauing with the last figure showing 15 cases, seven active and six recovered with two individuals passing away. There does come a time we need to trust the people in Hondo who have, in my observation, been doing a great job of following the city, county, and state's guidelines. Also, let's get back to restoring our liberties and freedoms covered by the Constitution. I trust our council will act appropriately to move forward and begin restoring and reopening Hondo.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Item number, we're discussing the sixth mayoral declaration of local state of disaster due to public health emergency. For reason of meeting this afternoon, of course, we've addressed the actions taken by Governor Abbott last Friday, ironically, the day after we met to change into our fifth declaration. In the governor's declaration, he hit on several things, but those that affect us the most first are the allowance of some of our small, nonessential businesses to be able to offer services only on a pickup or delivery type basis. These stores, as you can imagine, are some of our boutiques, our dress shops, jewelry shops, and some of those, I don't think there's a whole lot of them, but they are enduring a closing period of time right now. So if you go to the back, next to the back page, actually, it's order number 11. Order number 12 is a result of the governor's executive order GA-16 issued April 17th, 2020, reopen services that shall be allowed to open starting on April 24th, 2020, which include all retail businesses that are able to sell goods through pickup, delivery by mail, or delivery to the customer's doorstep in strict compliance with the terms required by the Texas Department of State Health Services. All other nonessential retail stores that are not able to provide pickup or delivery of goods or services must remain closed. Go back also to order number 10, which he says is a result of the governor's declaration, bars, lounges, taverns, private clubs, arcades, theaters, bowling alleys, bingo parlors, indoor commercial amusement business, gyms, martial arts studios, nail salons, salons, hair salons, barber shops, hair removal salons, massage parlors, spas, tattoo, and piercing parlors shall close. So that is the one order that we have no choice really but to go, the order number 12, we have no choice but to go with it as part of the governor's order, and he was very specific in saying these orders that he had last Friday cannot be changed by a county or a city. So that is something that we have no choice but to go along with. He also, the action of the Department of Homeland Security also changed some of their essential businesses and included auto sales businesses, which, of course, affected at least one of our businesses here in town. So anyway, that pretty well is what happened last Friday. He did also open up golf courses. That was one area that was still up to the cities to go along with what he wanted to do. I understand that San Antonio, I think this is here tomorrow, are opening up their public golf courses. Of course, the restrictions are, and I'll read our order number 13, which we'll need to discuss. The Hondo golf course will be allowed to reopen to allow golfers to walk the course as long as golfers take the necessary precautions to minimize in-person contact by maintaining a six-foot distance and include, but not limited to, the following prohibitions: no use of golf carts, ball washers, water coolers, rakes, and flags must not be removed. Clubhouses will remain closed. So open it up for discussion on the declaration. Another item I think I might want to discuss again this afternoon is the wearing of masks throughout the community. I know we're starting to see more cities get involved, and especially like San Antonio, you can't, once you leave the house and unless you're exercising or whatever, you have to wear a mask or in your car. So where Castroville yesterday, they did the same order that their citizens have to wear masks once they leave home. And I see a lot of other cities that are doing that. I know last week we discussed it, the debate, and decided for the time being to just recommend masks except for those particular areas we talked about, but I think we may want to reopen that back up. So I'm open for discussion.
Mayor, before we go into the golf and wearing of the masks, I don't, can either you or Cam explain, because I don't think that there's many people that understand this, what an essential business is and not essential business is?
Yes, sir. The essential businesses come out on the list by the Department of Homeland Security, and it was a list that we talked about in our previous declaration that we're adhering to that same list. And it's quite a lengthy list, as y'all remember, and covers a lot of different businesses. Any businesses that aren't on that essential list then can't be open, except by that change that was made Friday. So people ask that they can go to this website to get that list of essential services, but it is very lengthy. And when we got into this on the essential services, we spent a lot of time reading that and analyzing it, trying to see where our businesses fit in. And I think that one declaration, we agreed to go by that list. And that's what I'm talking about, they changed the other day to allow auto sales.
Mayor, if I can add one more thing that was in Governor Abbott's declaration was schools are closed for the rest of the year, and this has been updated to reflect that.
Right. So the only two things I know that are on the table still, first of all, the golf course. In my mind, I think we ought to leave it closed. I know that there are a few golfers in town that walk the course when they play golf, but most people ride carts. And plus the fact that right now Jerry Busby is trying to do quite a few improvements on the course while it's down in the way of working on the greens and all that. So if we were allowed to open up, that would kind of happen, what he's trying to do as far as improvements to the course. So in my mind, this would only affect a few people that would walk the course, and I think for the time being we ought to leave it closed.
Mayor, I agree with you. I think we ought to leave it closed, you know, because speaking for myself, I'm in the best interest for the community of Hondo, not just for certain people that want to utilize the golf course. Now, that's just my opinion, and I think we should leave it closed until this thing gets a little bit more calmed down.
Anybody else?
I agree.
Mayor, could we hear from Mr. Busby in terms of the feasibility of either way?
Did he hear?
Just step aside, let Jerry in. Well, can I say something? I like the order ads as it's written, and I think that we should allow the golf course to open, and I think that if the people that utilize the golf course adhere to the rules that we have set forth, that it's going to be fine. I mean, you're going to walk, you're going to distance yourself, you're taking away the carts, the ball washers, the clubhouse. I mean, I don't see a problem with it.
I understand what you're saying, Ms. Shaw, but the thing is, people still don't go by the rules. And if we're doing this, it's just like, we're not doing, we're not doing what we're supposed to do. This is, I mean, if it involves the whole city of Hondo, I could understand, but this involves just a few people that want to go out there and play golf and not do what they're supposed to do, and I'm not going to vote on something that only benefits a certain amount of people in the city of Hondo.
Well, to me, this is just like having a park open. We're having the parks open to where a family can go out there and use the park, utilize it, walk, and adhere to the same rules, and that's what we're asking here. I mean, we're not going to have, the city of Hondo is not going to have the golf course clubhouse open. It's just...
We'd still have to have somebody there all the time because expect green fees, plus somebody's got to monitor the activities on the course, which right now, even though Jerry is out there, there's a lot, you know, working on the course and all, it's just mandated us having somebody on duty all the time.
Jerry, we were to leave it open, how difficult is it going to be to make sure that all these guidelines are followed?
Well, I didn't hear exactly what all y'all said, but I do know what the last supplement that the judge had put down, is that something that's still in effect? The seven rules?
No, it's different.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can't take tee times over the phone, I guess is be the only way we could do that, because we can't do it over the internet or anything like that as of right now. I mean, the Hondo golf course has always been walk-in play only, so if we did tee times, you know, that'd be one way we could control it. As far as like difficulty of getting people to gather, once they're on the golf course, it's usually okay. It's just the start and the finish. If I can get them not to gather around the golf club itself, it's fine, but once they're on the course, they're spread out anyways.
Exactly.
So you're saying that in order to, I mean, obviously, there's got to be tee times. I read in the paper, San Antonio, one of the, they were talking about courses in general, and we're talking about 12-minute separations between teeing off the first tee, and they were doing it online and online payments only. We would have to do that by phone?
As that I know of, yes. I don't know how we would do...
We're not set up, we don't, as Jerry said, we don't do tee times typically. We're not set up to do tee times. That would be something that we would have to figure out, and not that Jerry's not capable of creating a system. Again, the way it works, we don't have a way for people to be able to pay to play golf online, and we don't have a way for people to be able to pay over the phone. So you're going to have to have an employee doing a face-to-face interaction with every person that comes to play golf to pay for their green fees, that's one thing. And again, he could schedule tee times over the phone. It could be as simple as setting up just a daily list, and he could write down who has what tee time. That's not as much the issue as being able to manage the payment and the green fees.
So under normal circumstances, the tee time and fees are done on a face-to-face basis?
Yes.
Just without a mask, as they would be now?
Yes.
So are other businesses in town, some are opening up and using masks for face-to-face contact, do we have the personnel to do that?
I mean, the golf courses, we have two employees that work inside. I'm one of them, and I have a part-time employee that works inside.
I mean, obviously, we'd have to make some modifications, you know, some plexiglass and make sure that we control the traffic coming in and out.
But realistically, I mean, this is a soft opening, so to speak. I mean, you're not going to be inundated with golfers for play, right? I mean, and do you anticipate having a huge problem with setting tee times and curtailing that? No. I mean, this is just, like Mr. McAnally said, I mean, we have businesses in town that are operating with the mask on, following the procedures, and if we can get the staff to do that, I just don't see the problem.
Are we allowing carts too, or no?
No.
What projects are you doing right now?
Well, today and yesterday, we airified, so if we do open back up, I would, personally, I would like to not open until maybe May 1st, but that's just me. But we did airifications, we've implemented, we've installed sprinklers in spots that didn't have them, some tee boxes. We seeded in some grass in tee boxes. We've gotten more grass to grow in the fairways. We upgraded our shop area, you know, so we can work on the equipment a little bit better like that. We have actually repaired all the equipment that we have, got everything going good, ready to go for when we do reopen.
Mayor, when is the way it sits now on the declaration that we did for the golf course, when is it due to relook at? Two more weeks?
The first time we've had that on the declaration, I believe.
It is the first time that it's been listed specifically.
Last item, number 13 on your question.
When we decided to close the golf course...
That was pretty much the staff's...
That was more, we discussed...
Did we have a date, a date, time where we were going to be able, whenever that set it?
No, sir, and the reason we didn't is because, again, we don't know when everything's going to be fully opened. And going back to Mr. Vela's comment, we would have to look at probably putting in some type of partition screening or something, even if it's just temporary between him and the customers or the staff and the customers. But again, that would then involve them coming in to the clubhouse. The other way may be to just open the door, take the card, scan it, or whatever, and use the door as the screen. But again, it, you know, I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying that there's some logistics that'll have to be thought through. And the reason that the golf course in particular was, one of those places that was closed was because we were having difficulty, even though the council had adopted rules, we were having significant difficulty with people following those rules, particularly at the golf course, and it was putting staff in a position where they were having to break up groups, large gatherings of groups and things. And the hope is that if it's, the logic is, that if it's single-player, you know, walking course, that will keep that from happening. But again, you just never know. I mean, we've inundated or we've issued decrees about not having the parks open, and we had to go out and break up a group of people at City Park Number Three because they decided to have a party. So, you know, it's...
I think taking away the golf carts is going to minimize the traffic.
Well, before we get through, we'll need to vote on the declaration period and what changes or whatever you want to make to it. So I think once we get to that...
Well, we don't need, you don't need a motion for this particular item?
Well, we can go ahead and have a motion, this particular item, but it'll be included in the final item that we have.
Well, I move that we go ahead and keep the golf course closed until further notice.
Do you second that motion?
Second.
Motion been made. Second, further discussion?
Mayor, this is, as people have talked to me, a lot of folks, there's a tension between being cautious and getting things going again, and this is part of it. And we are in the orbit of San Antonio, and our news and perceptions are shaped a lot by what's going on there. They are opening up their golf courses. Some courses have never really shut down. A lot of people have expressed, maybe not in exactly these words, but if I have to wear a mask everywhere I go, but we can start opening up again, okay. And to me, this is a, what we've got here, which is in compliance with other places around us and in compliance with what the governor has said, this is a kind of a soft opening. Now, I'm sensitive to our physical needs that the director talked about in terms of when we can open up.
Yeah, but then again, John, our face mask declaration doesn't say you must wear a face mask always, like San Antonio did. See, San Antonio's got a, their declaration is that everyone that leaves the house needs to wear a face mask. We do not have that.
Actually, what the declaration is, and ours is in the same thing with CDC, is that you must wear a face mask when you leave your house and you cannot practice social distancing. That's the guidelines from the CDC.
Yeah, but San Antonio's is like, as Bill said, theirs is not for everybody unless you're exercising or riding a car or whatever, whereas ours is only for some, for the specific businesses that we talked about. So if we went to change it to the golf course thing, I think we'd need to go to full mask too.
If I can add something quickly, the courses that are opening in San Antonio are also privately owned. City-owned courses are not opening.
Well, are county courses opening now?
There are no county courses, they're all privately owned.
I mean, within our county?
Yes, because they're, again, privately owned.
They're staying closed, aren't they?
I think the majority that are privately owned are opening, and the majority that are municipally owned are not.
But it's my understanding Castroville stayed closed, but the vines never did close. I guess that's the only two.
They closed over the Easter weekend, but they reopened. Castroville closed down, it's still closed.
According to today's paper, the muni courses in San Antonio are going to be opening.
Right.
Mayor, the reason I second this motion is because our superintendent, Jerry here, just told us that the course is not in plain condition, that the golf course has been aerated. You cannot go over there right now and physically play the golf course, it's not recommended. So everything's going to have to be temporary. He's going to have to spend more time moving temporary greens, doing temporary stuff just to get through this. That's why I was asking, when does the original declaration end for the golf course? That's why at that time, we can bring it back and look at it again. For right now, I don't think it's the, first of all, Jerry's getting some stuff done that needs to be done, and it's not even going to be playable. Why are we even thinking about opening it? The greens are aerated. What that means is they got little bitty holes all over the green, and it's not playable. It's not really recommended to play. Am I right, Jerry?
So...
I mean, you can play it, but it's not recommended because it's going to cover up your holes again. So he's going to need more time to get that right. So why don't we wait another couple of weeks, bring it back and revisit it again? Two more weeks is not going to kill our local golfers.
We never did have a declaration that would expire on golf courses. That was just a management decision.
Okay.
So we never did address as a council golf courses.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, in a couple of weeks, we'll bring it back and revisit it again and see where we sit. If he's saying that the course is 100% and he's already done what he needs to do, because he's going to continue doing some more upgrades and maintenance and stuff out there at the course, a couple of more weeks is not going to kill anybody. That's...
I'd also like to add something that Councilman McAnally said. We are fast coming to that recovery stage.
Right.
I think we see it all over, and I see our latest cases of positive cases have remained at 15 for a good week, I guess. And so we're starting to make the turn. I think we have to be very careful about making the turn too quickly. In that mind, I plan on at our next council meeting, appointing a economic recovery task force group that will address the recovery and advise the council on when we can do certain things. So we are fast getting to that point. Now, which means probably the golf course probably would be reopened at that point.
Right.
And also, I would imagine, and I think the governor, come Friday, like I said, is going to come up with some more businesses that he's going to allow to be open. So we're fast getting to that point. I think we need people like our Dina County Health people and the hospital people and all that to kind of tell us when they think it'd be a good time to go ahead and start letting some people reopen.
Well, you know, that's a good thing, Mayor, that in the last week, we've kept it at 15, but then again, in two, three days, it could change. And why go into it as, what's the hurry in getting this thing? Nobody knows what's going to happen.
That's why I want the people to tell us that know what's going on, when they think we can start doing some recovery. This council, as smart as we all are, we're probably not smart enough to know when some of these health changes can be made.
Well, I'm not, we rely on them.
I agree with relying on the health folks. And Jerry, you say May 1st would be the earliest we could open anyway? That's Friday a week.
We airified the greens. You can play on them, golfers don't really care to play on them, airified, but you can, but me personally, I would rather wait until May 1st.
Which is Friday a week.
Then that's all my projects will be done, especially with the greens. Another reason why Castroville's actually still staying closed is because they just airified also.
I would bet next week, we will have another meeting. I think the governor is going to make some other changes on Friday.
Yes.
I think that it would be counterproductive to...
Whenever we need to, but...
To play on those, on the greens, you know, especially if we put work into them.
Productive.
I mean, you can play on them, like I said, just golfers, it's like playing flinko. You know, golfers are golfers, they just want to get out there and play, but to be better for the greens, yeah.
What grass have you laid out?
What grass have I laid out? We planted Bermuda seeds, it's a Palmetto Bermuda seeds, just on tee boxes in fairways.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Mr. Carries. Do you want to reopen the discussion on the mask, or we want to stick to what we did last Thursday?
I would like to reopen it again, Mayor. We had our meeting last Thursday, and I pushed for us to do the mandatory mask wearing, and nobody agreed with me. And that same night, the... that same night, the mayor, the mayor of San Antonio, as we, when he came up with everyone should be wearing face masks, whether you go to, to Sonic or HEB or Walmart. And I wish the rest of the council would feel the same way as I do, but if we need a motion on this, I would like to make a motion if, if I wanna change it again.
Yes, we did on the golf. I guess if you wanna make a motion, you can.
Well, I move that we make the mask wearing mandatory as soon as you leave your house, going to HEB, Sonic, pharmacy, the convenience store, wherever you're gonna go.
Is there any second to Councilman Villa's motion? I would second if I could, but is there any second?
I think, again, Mayor, this is one of those areas where obviously we have a split opinion. I know, I understand that Councilman Villa received some phone calls about his opinion wanting to go full mask.
I had many a calls.
Okay, and I had some that said that we did the right thing. So, who's right and who's wrong? Who knows? You know, I, I don't know. I, I can't, nobody here at this table can say.
Nobody's right and nobody's wrong, but I still feel that until we know for sure that this pandemic has slowed down or they come up with something that we should make wearing the mask mandatory.
Just observing around town, what I've seen, probably 75, 80% of people comply.
Right. They are complying and, and again, the way, the way we left it, it was recommended. We had recommendations and then we had the people that are actually clerks, so forth and so on, that had to have it. There wasn't a question. And it's recommended. You know, I think we, we kinda did our part as far as, I mean, what else can we do other than to go 100% full mask? So, we either have a choice of, you know, people doing it on their own, you know, some people feel different. And, and I understand what Johnny says, but he needs to understand that we do have people thinking the other way also. And, and here we are.
We did have in our order, if you're going to an essential business, you have to be wearing a mask.
Right, I understand that.
Well, and that, that's not a problem. But if I go to the track to walk four laps and there's eight of us there and we're spaced out, sorry, no pun intended, we're spaced out, distanced socially, you know, the masks do interfere a little bit with breathing. And a lot of folks are just not ready to say every time I go anywhere, I have to wear a mask.
Well, San Antonio still allows that you're exercising, walking or whatever, you don't have to wear your mask.
Yeah, the difference between San Antonio and anything outside of it is that San Antonio's very dense. San Antonio's very dense and we're, we're still rural. You know, I think this council's done a really good job of balancing the skills and, and trying to make the right decisions in, in regards to how restrictive we're gonna be and how lenient we're gonna be. You know, I, I got a lot of phone calls in regards to the masks, you know, both ways. You know, people tell me every day that, that we should go full mask. I don't think we're at that point.
There you go again, at that point. The thing is, we don't wanna get to that.
But we have to balance the scale.
Do you wanna wear the mask when everybody's contaminated already?
We have to continue trying to make the right decision.
We're not there yet. You know, the thing is, we don't wanna get there. And besides, every, every topic we talk about, we talk about, well, San Antonio's doing this, Castroville's doing, I'm not concerned about San Antonio, Castroville, Uvalde, Eagle Pass. I'm concerned about the citizens of Hondo.
You just mentioned the decision San Antonio made.
Mayor, if I can make a.
Everybody else does.
So, so exactly where are we with the city of Hondo? How many cases do we have in the city of Hondo?
There are seven cases in the 78861 area.
Right, and.
We're not allowed or not supposed to disclose how many are specifically within the city limits.
Okay, and in the county, we have how many?
15.
And how long has it been 15?
Last one's there.
Last week.
So, for a week, we've been at 15?
Since last Thursday.
Yes, but my, my understanding is that there was some anticipation. It may go up today. Also, I would like to suggest that since the police chief is part of our emergency management team, that maybe he offers some advice and his opinion on the masks, if that's okay.
Mayor, Mayor Council, I'll tell you, just based off of the information that we've seen from the law enforcement side and the emergency management side and the discussions that we've had with citizens and other law enforcement surrounding the area, I will tell you, if you wanna ask my opinion, I will tell you that I agree with Councilman Villa as far as the mask. You know, it's, it's kind of one of those deals where nobody knows. We really don't know the actual numbers. The numbers could spike today, the numbers could spike tomorrow, they could spike next week. The, the problem is that, that's what I'm seeing is that we don't know where we're at right now, honestly. So, why not take that extra measure now to avoid anything, you know, let's help try to mitigate the spread? And I feel that by having the mask on, I mean, we're not doing much more than what we're already seeing out in the public already. Some businesses are already requesting that you can't enter their businesses unless you have a mask on, you know, even children. So, that's just my opinion from what, you know, and I'll tell you, it's stuff that we've been hearing out from the emergency, emergency management side, the law enforcement community, and of course, you know, San Antonio, yes, San Antonio's a bigger city, but at the same time, we're a smaller city. We're not San Antonio, we're Hondo. We wanna do our due diligence to make sure that we ensure the safety of our community and our first responders. So.
What are you saying as a percentage, you think, that people are wearing masks in Hondo?
I think it's high. I, I think it's, it's been a good percentage, but at the same time, we still have those that do not wanna comply or do not wanna wear that mask. I mean, that's totally, right now, with the direction that we put out last week, you know, the first thing that people indicated was it's recommended, not required. That's fine. That's, that's their personal opinion. That's, that's, they have their right. We still, at the local stores, see children at the stores. We see infants at the stores without any type of covering. That's something that's concerning, you know. Right now, we just don't have, we do, even though there's not a law, a order standing that we require, we do still make contact on a voluntary basis and just say, hey, look, we just wanna make sure that we educate you on the social distancing. CDC does recommend that if you go out, you know, and you don't wanna wear a mask, make sure that you utilize social distancing. You never know when you're out in the community, if, if you're put in a situation where you can't, and at that point, by that time, it's already too late. You're at the local shopping, at the shopping store, the aisles are, are, you know, they're not as wide as we would like them to be. You got five, six, seven people down one aisle.
What are you saying, while you're up, what are you saying about gatherings?
Gatherings, we've had a couple of gatherings that, that we had to turn around and break up. We've had some at the local parks that we still have to make contact with towards, more towards the evening.
Any citations?
As I thought it was gonna be, but we still had some crowds that were probably about 30, 40, that we had to break up and we.
Councilman Val had a.
Any citations?
No citations. We were trying to do voluntary compliance and a lot of them did, did, did work on the voluntary, the voluntary compliance did work. But then again, you know, it's, it's hit miss. The guys are notified and they're asked to patrol the areas more to try to make sure that we keep that as minimal as possible.
And we do have a couple of areas in town where we consistently get people contacting us and saying, hey, there's a gathering in this area of town. So, PD has noted that and are doing extra patrols there. And again, I don't wanna go either way, per se, on the mask. I just think it's important to listen to somebody who's, or get advice from somebody who's participating on numerous emergency management calls.
Again, too, they're not asking that you have to wear a particular mask. All they're asking for is to be able to provide some sort of a covering. So, I know some people are, are, are making comments that they cannot afford masks, they can't get to the mask. All we're asking for is just some sort of covering. That's all we're really asking for.
Full covering.
The other thing to note was that a lot of the feedback that we got on social media after the last mask discussion was that the retailers, the people that are, the clerks and the things that are actually working in the stores feel that the council should take action to mandate wearing masks because they feel that it's in their protection as well. Because they're still working, they're still at the grocery store checking us out. And they said, it's great that you're making us wear masks, but it would be nice if you'd make the customers wear masks too. So, that was just the feedback that we got via social media.
Yeah, we're not making the patrons wear, wear masks when they go in.
But they are now. There's a lot of them. The Donner General, I was there Sunday, I guess, and they, I was not wearing a mask and they, they told me that, I guess it was Monday or, yeah, Monday, I guess, I was not gonna be allowed in the store unless I had a mask. And I believe the owner of the, this convenience store where I'm at is gonna start doing that here pretty quick also.
What about the restaurants, Chief? Are they complying with our latest order as far as the restaurants, are they?
The restaurants?
Complying with the employees wearing masks?
We did. We had a couple of issues the day after. Declaration was actually pushed out. We did print out some letters. We did go by there and make contact with them personally, especially the managers, and we informed them of the new declaration and the new, and the letter that was put out. And as far as I know, everybody's pretty much in compliance.
All right, the motion was made by Councilman Villa. Glad for lack of a second. Going back to the item that we'll be discussing or voting on, Sixth Morial Declaration, we had a motion that Order Number 13 be eliminated. And I think that would be the only change that in the, in this declaration. So, I'm open for a motion to adopt the Morial Declaration Number Six with the admission of our Order Number 13. Do I have a motion?
Second. Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I, in our Exhibit One, just for the record, under Item E, under Declaration Regarding Public and Private Gatherings, Item E, in the copy in front of us, says continuant until 11:59 PM on April 22nd. The one that we got via email listed the 19th. And I think it's important that we know which date we're talking about here and does a date and some other part of our declaration supersede this? If we could get that from the attorney.
We checked the dates very closely. That's why this was changed to April 22nd for the 30-day. It says here somewhere, this is good for 30 days and that complies with the April 22nd.
So, that supersedes this?
Several changes that we made, I think after the, when I was.
So, so when is the 30 days up, man?
22nd of May.
22nd of May. So, the April 22nd on there's a exhibit, like John said, Exhibit One, under E, it's not gonna end on April 22nd, which is tomorrow. It's not gonna end then.
Right now, this is good for 30 days unless we change it.
Where?
30 days from today? Okay. So, it's gonna supersede this?
Actually, this is, this is, should be May the 22nd.
And it should be April 20th, or. It should be April 20th to May 20th.
Well, actually, it should be April the 22nd first and then May the 22nd after.
Right.
According to the attorney, all dates should now be April 30th.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. Why would we extend it out to May?
It doesn't make sense to me because that's, you know, April 30th is eight days from now.
Right.
You know, and so, it doesn't make sense. And besides, in here, it says that this, this is good for 30 days.
He's texting again. Give him a minute. He says, to be consistent with the governor's order.
Mayor, if we do, if we do extend it 30 days till May the 30th, we can always have a meeting and, and, and change the dates, can't we?
Section 12 says 30 days.
Section 12.
From today.
Declaration, second back to meeting from an after edition and be effective for 30 days from the date of fact, section 12. So, this date thing is very confusing from the standpoint of governors and ours and all that. It just says 30 days.
Mayor, could you please make more of a speed into the Bible part?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion on the table?
Well, what did the city attorney say?
He said, all dates should now be April 30th to be consistent with governor's order. And he says, you still, I asked the question so we can't extend the curfew and all of that, 30 days, and he says you still can. But if state declaration expires sooner or not extended, it would have an effect.
So, if we leave it like this, it doesn't matter?
It depends on what the governor does.
Okay, so clarify it for me.
Let me see if I can get him on the phone.
When is our next council meeting?
Next week?
So, let's just do it till Monday.
Well, of course, Monday, I figure we're gonna be addressing this with whatever he has for Friday.
So, let's just, let's just do it till Monday. We have a meeting on Monday.
Or the 30th, right? April 30th?
What day? Monday is the 27th.
I'm trying to get him on the phone.
With the governor's order, which is the 30th. But then our, you know.
Hey, let me put you, let me put you on speaker. Hold on. All right, I have Frank Garza on the phone. I'm gonna try to hold it up so y'all can hear him.
Mr. Garza?
Go ahead, Frank.
Mayor Council, Mayor Council, most of the governmental entities are extending theirs till April 30th. Because you're waiting to see if the governor is going to extend theirs any longer. You can still do yours 30 days, but if the state declaration expires or is not extended, then you would have to basically void yours as well.
No.
If there's no longer a statewide declaration.
Well, we can do that.
So, most entities are just extending until April 30th. Wait, what happens to the governor? But there's also no provision if he were to do it from 30 days. And simply wait to see what happens to the governor's declaration.
Our declaration is somewhat different than the governor's because it has some added provisions. So, would those be good for 30 days?
Those would be, but if the state no longer has statewide emergency declaration, then yours would, that would also have an effect on your emergency declarations as well. You would have to show by Hondo, by the rest of the state, your declaration.
So, just do it to 30?
April 30th.
So, would it be all right just to leave our declaration like it is right now?
Yes, sir. You just have to see what happens with the governor after April 30th.
Okay. That's covered. That's your question.
Thanks, Frank.
Mayor, I, I got a question before.
Oh, I'm not gonna hang up yet. Go ahead.
Are we able to discuss any of the other things before we, we, we approve all this?
You can discuss anything on the declaration.
Okay, on sec, I, I need somebody to, to explain what Section 5 under the, what that actually means. If, if that's something that the governor put in at the beginning or the, that we as a city decided to put it in there or?
No, this is the governor's part.
Okay.
What it amounts to is if we, for some reason, saw a need in Hondo for additional hospital rooms or, or whatever, we could say, commandeer the, the.
Jim.
Some building in town that could be utilized for, for this pandemic that's happening already in San Antonio where they had to take over some other buildings for hospitals to use. But I don't, I don't see that happening. But this, this is something that came out in the governor's declaration.
I just wanted it explained and I, and I hope that the people that call me about it understand it better. I, I kinda explained it to them after talking to Kim and, but I just wanted to bring it up and hopefully these people that were calling me on Section 5, you know, understand what Section 5 means. And it wasn't something that the city did. It came from the governor's office.
This is mainly that something would be happening if we had a hurricane or something and had to commandeer a building for people to stay in, that type of thing during that period.
Well, even if this pandemic got out of hand, you know, we'd, we'd have to, you know, have this section in there.
But what I think. But what, I think, just to clarify, so we can say it out loud, this isn't that we would be using people's houses. Typically, what you use are schools, they're gymnasiums. If somebody has a private recreation center, think of it when they had Hurricane Katrina, they commandeered the Superdome in the city of New Orleans, and FEMA did that. That's what this is about. It's not about, I'm gonna go take Johnny's house and use it as the emergency command center for this.
Well, you know, I, I think that, that's what the people that called me were concerned about. Thank you.
Any other questions pertaining to the declaration, or who would vote on the motion?
No, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Last item, number five, is motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Go second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion, we are adjourned. Thank you.